Okay, is everybody here?
I believe so, Chair.
I believe so, Chair.
We can go ahead and get started.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the March 13th, 2024 meeting of Planning, Lacey City Planning Commission to order, and we'll begin with role. Is there anybody missing tonight?
We do not have Judy Doyle with us at this point. Other than that, the rest of the Planning Commission is present.
Thank you all very much. First of all, to everybody that can see me right now, I apologize for not being there. I had a conference this week, taking some required continuing education courses. I probably am not going to be able to stick around for the end of the meeting. I have another meeting this evening, which is part of the conference. But I do want to begin this evening with the land acknowledgement, and I'm wondering if Tanya would be willing to read that for us, please.
We, the city of Lacey, are on the central lands of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as it has today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of 1854.
Thank you very much, Tanya. Well done. So, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda and the minutes of our last meeting. So, I would entertain a motion and a second on that.
I'll second to approve the agenda. So, we need to make-
Do they have a motion?
Hold on just a second. Make sure to use the microphone. So, push the button and the green light will come on. So, the first step is that we need a motion. So-
I would move that we approve the agenda and the minutes of the prior meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So, now we've come to a point in the meeting where we have an opportunity for public comment, but I would, we do have a public he, or a public hearing in a little bit on the neighborhood commercial zoning. So, right now, it would be public comment for anything else that is not related to the subject of our public hearing tonight. So, is there anybody that would like to comment?
I'm not seeing anybody in the room. Correct, for the public hearing. So, we'll hold the public hearing in a little bit. If there's, if there's public comment for items that aren't related to the public hearing, this would be the time to be able to do that. Does anybody like to provide comment? I don't see anybody in the room. If there's anybody on Zoom, use the raise hand function and we'll go ahead and bring you in. John, can you let me know if there's anybody on Zoom? No one on Zoom? Okay. So, at this point, I think it's safe to move forward in the agenda.
All right, thank you very much. So, do any of the Planning Commission members have anything that they would like to report on this evening?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Karen.
Thank you. First off, I wanted to say thank you to the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Chairman Willie Frank III. My daughter plays softball, and it is amazing to see the beautiful new scoreboards. The wonderful new scoreboards that they have at North Hurston High School. And going to the, the high school last Thursday for the 50th anniversary of the Bolt decision, it was a wonderful celebration to see that Billy Frank Jr.'s statue was going to be in the Hall of Statuary in the U.S. Capitol. So, I think that is a wonderful way to honor the salmon and our ecosystem and the call for us all to really be stewards of this land. Also, a house across the street from my own sold, and I was really excited when I saw one of, a young boy the same age as my son. So, I guess this is maybe leaning towards a question, and then I did have one more comment after this, but it was what you might think of affordable, about $400,000, and it sold really quickly for about 10 over market, 15 over market. And when I checked in with them, they said, "Oh, yeah, we, we've, we're just fixing this up for someone who's bought this home and is, is planning to rent it out." And so, I, I think this might be a question for later. I was interested in, as we're pursuing developing affordable housing, this is someone from a Realtor in Bellevue who purchased this home. Are there safeguards in place to ensure that affordable housing in Lacey goes to people who actually live here and are buying starter homes? And then, the third thing, said I live in Macy, Lacey Midtown and right on, on the edge of that, and on the 6th, I believe, it was last Thursday, there was a police, or a sheriff pursued a vehicle, passed a school bus right by Panorama, past my neighborhood, and then onto a bike path and a walking path, which is a place where my children cross the street, where my daughter, past my daughter's bus stop. And then, of course, down the walking trail where I think, you know, a few people walking their dogs had to, to go to safety, kind of on the side of the, of the path, so that they weren't run over by the trucks. And I know there's just one small barrier at the, the foot of, or the entrance to that, that bike path, but it seems like to prevent something that would really be tragic in the future, that we need to put maybe something, a barrier that is a little bit more substantial to prevent police chases or, or sheriff chases or, or cars using our, our bike paths, as we're looking at Lacey being a walkable city, to prevent those vehicles for using that for things other than, you know, the, the city tree trimming or maintenance. And so, I was hoping that maybe there's a way that we could ensure public safety on those trails.
Okay, Karen. So, thank you for bringing up the point. So, for your question about the affordable housing, I would give staff an opportunity to go get some research and bring us back information at a future meeting. As far as the entrances to the Shalas, or to any of the trails, actually, the, the protocol used to be to put up more ballards across those entrances, and the county and the cities ran into a problem with access, ADA-related access. And so, that is one reason why the openings to those trails are so wide. I don't know if Ryan has any more comment on that.
I don't. We'll, we'll bring information back on the affordable housing issue, and then I'll, I'll talk to Scott Agar, Public Works Director, who's very familiar with the infrastructure that's required around our trails. I know that, and Jeff is right, there's some requirements for ADA access that limit what kind of ballards that you can put in, but I'll clarify what those can and can't be and bring that back to a future meeting.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Okay, any of the other members have anything to comment on tonight? Okay, do we have any reports out of the department?
I had no department report tonight.
Okay, thank you. At this point, then, we will go to the public hearing. I'm going to, first of all, since I cannot be here for the entire meeting, I want to say that Daphne, the vice chair, is going to take over upon my exit. So, for, at this point, we are going to suspend the regular meeting of the Lacey Planning Commission and open the public hearing. As I said before, I'm Jeff Gadman. I'm Chair of the Planning Commission this year, and we have Daphne, who is the vice chair, and then the other members are here to listen to your comments tonight. I do, and then we've got members of the department here to make presentation and to also listen to your comments. We are the Planning Commission members that are appointed by your city council. We are all volunteers and not elected. We're your neighbors, and we are here with a deep commitment to serve you and the best interests of the city of Lacey. This Planning Commission meets the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at 6:00 P.M. at Lacey City Hall and on Zoom, and you, as members of the public, are encouraged to attend and to add any relevant comments to our discussions. City staff then provide support to the Planning Commission, doing research and coming back with reports and information to help the Planning Commission conduct our business. And then, at the end of that process, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the city council, who ultimately have the decision-making on the issues that come before the Planning Commission. So, the purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for all members of the public who wish to participate, to share their feedback, if you so desire. Public hearing creates a record of comments that ultimately go to city council with any Planning Commission recommendation. I, I want to add, too, that all of the public comments that are submitted in writing or during this hearing are available at, for, as public record for future research. Time limits are placed on individual comments, and they will be strictly adhered to. We have a lot of people we need to hear from tonight, and I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. The public comments should definitely be confined to what we are discussing tonight. This public hearing is regarding a proposed change associated with the standards applicable, applicable to the neighborhood commercial zoning district. City staff will provide a presentation, and then the Planning Commission will allow public testimony. At the end of the public testimony, the Planning Commission will adjourn the meeting. We will not be responding to public comment because we want to take those comments back and digest them and incorporate them into our thoughts regarding future process on this particular zoning district. At the next regular meeting on March 27th is when the Planning Commission is going to discuss the, any proposed amendments that come out of this public testimony, and we'll be discussing some of your comments that we feel like helped shape our thoughts. At the end of the work session, that work session on the 27th, Planning Commission may vote on a recommendation to city council, or we may end up deciding there's more work to be done and will defer it until later. So, I would like to point out the ground rules for the public hearing. All speakers must speak into the microphone and give their names and addresses. All, all comments should be addressed to the commission, not staff, and to the, and they should be based on the, and relevant to the proposed amendments. It should not be of a personal nature. Planning Commission will listen to the testimony, but will not provide answers to all que, to questions tonight. Speakers will have a time limit of three minutes. Please avoid repetitive comments. We, all right, I slipped. We are wanting to, we want to make sure, any of you that have comments are able to say them tonight in the name of efficiency. If, if somebody speaks in, ahead of you that basically has the comments that you wanted to make, I would encourage you, when it's your turn, to just say, "I agree with that particular speaker," and your comment will be logged as such. Please avoid repeating some things that other people have said. Like I said, this is just in the name of efficiency and trying to get us all out of here at a reasonable time tonight. If there are a large number of speakers, including many who are part of groups or organizations, please ask for a representative of your group to speak on behalf of all of you. We will tally that as a multiple comment. But again, that way, your comment is registered and we'll know how many people support that thought. Any unruly behavior, such as booing, hissing, or harassing remarks, is prohibited. No applause, please, after a person's testimony. I know it's hard sometimes to quell your enthusiasm, but again, we're trying not to be disruptive during this hearing process because it is very important that we get through it. Disruptive behavior may lead to dismissal from the room. Speakers are not permitted to give their time to another permit participant. So, if you speak for 30 seconds, that doesn't leave two and a half minutes that you get to give to somebody else. I'd really encourage you to speak if you really feel the need to, because that is how you shape, I mean, you're the voices of our city, right? Planning Commission will act on your behalf with the best information we have available within constraints and given the direction from the city council that we're given. So, is there anybody that does not understand any of these rules that I just stated? Okay, thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. So, I believe Hauntz has a presentation for us tonight, and then we will open it up for public testimony.
There was a question in the back of the room, Jeff.
Oh, okay.
My question is, I'm presuming that the meeting is scheduled for about 90 minutes as the other commission meetings have run. Is that accurate? And if there are only a few people that are signed up, I don't know how many might be online, but if there are only a few people that are signed up, would we have the courtesy of presenting our full testimony?
Three minutes. That's going to be the limit for everybody. That, that keeps it fair and even.
So, we could be out of here quickly then tonight. Okay, thank you.
Well, well, and, and the thing is, if you have something longer, please submit it in writing, because that's going to be easier for us to refer back to as well. Okay, Hauntz, I think you're up.
All right. Can everybody hear me? All right, wonderful. My name is Hon Shepard. I'm a senior planner here at the city of Lacey. I'm going to be presenting, providing really just a brief recap of everything that we've done as part of this work effort up to today, and then also some of the potential steps or outcomes moving forward beyond today. So, let's see if this clicker works here. There we go. Okay. So, I do want to start really quickly, just by showing everybody the project-specific website. This is a website, or webpage, I should say, sorry, that exists within the city of Lacey website, and it is, really works as a kind of document library of all the materials, all the findings, all the information that we've collected or developed and put out into the community throughout the duration of this process. So, while my presentation tonight is going to be pretty brief, most of the things that we're going to cover tonight and all the material that we've produced up until this point, and then also moving forward, is available on that website. So, anytime if you want to come back and check on something or refresh your memory, or see some of the materials that were presented at any point throughout this process, that web address there is always available to you as a easy resource. So, with that in mind, I do want to just provide a little bit of high level of information on what these neighborhood commercial districts are currently today. As of today, this meeting, we have eight districts located within the city of Lacey. They are located primarily out along kind of the periphery of the community. We have them all listed there. I'm not going to read each one. For reference, the little blue building on the map there is City Hall, so that's kind of where we're located today. But we have three different locations located to north of I-5, and then another five located to the south that are represented by those numbers that you see there on that map. One of the, the primary purposes of these districts is to provide goods and services closer to where community members live. They are located around the periphery of the community to fill a lot of those service gaps that are left by some of our more general commercial-style districts that exist within the city. I believe we have around 10 different types of commercial districts in character. These ones are typically of the lowest level of intensity as far as their style of development and level of use. They're intended to really cut down on vehicle miles traveled, so giving a lot of neighborhoods a closer option, so you don't have to travel all the way into midtown or the central part of the community to get maybe one item that you may have forgot for resources or groceries or what have you. At a high level, that's, that's the intent of these districts. The map here actually shows a walking map or a 15-minute walking map. That's that kind of gold shading there to kind of show their intended service areas to some degree. So, that's, that's what that map is about there. So, that was a little bit of background on these districts, and now these next couple slides that I'm going to run through have to do with the, the specific update and review of this code and getting into where we are today. So, this project actually kicked off at the end of 2022, beginning of 2023, and we went into it really with a lot of questions, but we didn't want to be targeted in our questions that we're asking. So, we intentionally went very broad in the type, type of conversations that we had. We intended, intentionally left our questions very open-ended, and the goal behind that was really to let feedback guide where we went with this process, let it inform our decisions moving forward, and really let that community feedback dictate what steps were taken from the beginning all the way through to the end. At a high level, we had around 150 different in-person participants or direct conversations with individuals throughout the community. We also had a community-wide survey that had, we actually had multiple community-wide surveys, and we had around 875 participants through those surveys, providing additional feedback. We utilized our city of Lacey social media, newspaper publications. We reached out to all the different HOA, HOAs in our community. We have different distribution lists, so anytime certain types of projects come up, community members can sign up for those types of projects and say, "Yes, I'm interested in this subject," to let me know anytime that happens. So, we utilize those lists as well. And then, we also, as we touched on earlier, had stood up a project-specific website for this project, and then we also went to our youth council and actually into our schools to gain feedback there as well. From all of that initial feedback that we received, we put together a kind of summary packet, if you will, that collected all of that feedback and tried to organize it based on common themes, common sentiments that were expressed. We made a summary packet, but we also published the, the raw data or the, the just unfiltered feedback, if you will, on the website. So, that's all out there and available. I encourage anybody that hasn't yet to look at that and read it. Some of the common themes that we heard throughout those early conversations, I have bulleted here, but one of the big ones that was a- So there is a disconnect right now between what the intent of these districts are and then also in practice, what they're being developed as. So that was one of the big takeaways there. We also heard a lot about vehicle and shipping traffic concerns specifically around larger vehicles and their interactions with pedestrians, cyclists, people in neighborhoods that are using sidewalks, and what that kind of large-scale, small-scale interaction looks like. We also, specifically north of I-5, heard about quality food and produce options. That was a common theme that we heard, and that was predominantly north of I-5 is where those those statements were coming from when we were kind of looking at geographic data attached with that. We also heard about square foot and setbacks that aren't really adaptive to each one of these districts, so we do have a little bit of a one-size-fits-all within our current code, in that some of the feedback that we heard there is that it's not really allowing for creativity with uses or space. And then we also heard a greater emphasis on the design elements, so really getting at kind of the character of these districts, and that neighborhood fit was another thing that was really important and wanted to be carried forward within whatever the draft code was that was later produced. As part of this process, we also did business and tenant outreach, so we wanted to make sure that the businesses that are currently operating and existing within these districts today were also represented within the feedback that we heard. So we actually went door-to-door with every single commercial business located within these districts to make sure that they were aware of this process and then also just connect them with resources about how to participate, find out what's working, what's not, and then connect them with city resources in support of business development. We also went and reached out to different site managers, property owners, prospective developers as part of this process, also just to raise general awareness and encourage participation within the the work as we move forward. Some of the common themes that we heard throughout that outreach had to do with residential flexibility and more market-driven uses. So again, just really kind of getting at that flexibility component within our current One of the questions that we intentionally asked, really anytime we had a conversation with somebody throughout this project, was are there any example locations that you would like to see our neighborhood commercial districts modeled after? And the reason that we asked that question is that it's sometimes easier to point to a familiar district or location that you frequent instead of talking about, you know, whether or not that's a 10-foot or a 5-foot setback. It takes it from more of an abstract concept to putting it in more familiar terms a lot of times. And through these questions, we actually received over, I think, 100 different destinations across Washington, across the country, and even in other countries that were great examples of what these districts could be in the future. From that list, we we looked at the ones that occurred most frequently, and I have some of those listed up there. So locations like University Place, Dupont, the Proctor District, Point Ruston, Wildwood, and Briggs, and Olympia, Port Townsend, and Fairhaven were some of the ones that were identified most frequently. And the reason that we asked these questions from a planning perspective is that these are all physical locations that exist, they're part of cities, they have code that specifically attached to them, so we can actually look at that code and use that as inspiration and figure out what are the common themes that exist within that code that might be able to be replicated within our own community. And that included things like design elements, intent statements, permitted uses, access in public spaces, the relationship with housing, both within these districts but then also immediately adjacent, and what that relationship looks like. So those are all things that we looked at with this information that was provided by the community. And then with all of that, we went back out to the community, and this has really been an iterative process in the sense that every time we kind of take a step forward, we get more information, we get some findings from that information, then we re-present it back to the community, and really it's intended just as a check-in to make sure that we are hearing what the community is saying, but then also that we're moving forward in the right way. So yeah, this phase really included a lot of kind of collection of all of the feedback, all of the findings, all the materials that we had developed to that point, went back out to the community, both in in-person format but then also online. Again, all of this was posted to the website. And then we also did an internal review, making sure that the code that we were drafting was consistent with all of our other different codes. We have a lot of other design requirements within the City of Lacey that are not necessarily specific to this district but do play a role in the kind of general character of these districts that's applied throughout the city, but we wanted to make sure that we had consistency there. And then we also went back to the Planning Commission. They've seen this, or at least portions of this presentation quite a few times, so thank you for bearing with me on that one. Then we also went out to council briefings and work sessions to make sure that they were up to speed on the direction that we were going in and that the findings that we were arriving on were consistent with their general intent for these districts moving And then that actually brings us pretty close to where we are today. Over the last, I guess, in 2024, we went back out to the council in January. We've met with the Planning Commission a couple of times so far this year, and then we launched a community review, which we're kind of getting into the tail end of, where we published our draft code as it was, as it is currently written, that many of you may have in front of you. And then tonight is the Planning Commission public hearing, which we're all at today. And then moving forward, we're going to receive the information that we have tonight. The Planning Commission is going to reconvene and really kind of go through everything that we've heard, all the feedback that we've received, both written and verbally presented, and then we will update the draft based on that feedback and the discussions that we have around that. That will lead to a draft recommendation that will be forwarded on to City Council, where then that draft will undergo additional review before the City Council ultimately makes some form of action on that draft later in spring of this year. With that, that reaches the end of my presentation, so I'm going to actually hand it back over to Vice Chair Daphne.
Actually, I'm still here.
Or or Jeff, if you're still here.
All right. Thank you, Hauntz, very much. So now is the point where we get into listening to the public, members of the public. I just want to remind you, this is not the place to be criticizing the Planning Commission, the City Council, or the city staff. Please make your comments relevant to the proposed amendments to the neighborhood commercial. And I'm not sure, Daphne, do you have the list of?
I do. I have the list.
Okay, then I will let you read them off and give them their three minutes.
Great. So I see quite a few names on the top of the list that have chosen not to speak. You know, if that changes, let us know. So the first person that I see that wanted to speak was Tyrell Bradley. Tyrell, if you wouldn't mind going to the mic and give your name and your address, please, and tell us what you have to say.
Oh, and before Tyrell begins, I just want to say we're going to go through the list first, then we'll ask if any members of the audience have changed their mind and want to speak and give them an opportunity, and go to the members of the public that are online.
Tyrell Bradley, 2800 Forest Hill Drive, Olympia, and also owner of the 6.4-acre NC-zoned parcel at the northeast corner of 41st and Marvin.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time.
Sorry. I'm much taller and the mic is much shorter. I will do a wide stance here. Sorry. I'm a principal engineer at LDC, which is a local engineering firm, and like I mentioned, co-owner of the 6.4-acre parcel at the northeast corner of 41st and Marvin. So sorry if that didn't come across. We did submit written comments. I drew the short straw of the ownership and got the opportunity to come here and just pick a couple of highlights that are easier to convey verbally than in written comments. One of the three main points of our letter is the affordable housing component that was added. I work for one of the developers that did the first multifamily affordable housing project in Olympia, and it's critical that those types of projects are in the MFTE zone, the multifamily tax exemption zones, because it allows the developer to offset the additional cost burden that comes with lower rent caps. And so we we have some strong concerns about adding that to the first floor of freestanding multifamily projects because none of the current NC zones are within the MFTE zone. So you couldn't apply for the tax exemption to help offset and provide that affordable housing. I'm also the engineer on the Habitat for Humanity 112-unit multifamily permanently affordable housing project, and because they're a nonprofit, they can apply for grants that most for-profit developers can't. So I just wanted to highlight that, that we have concerns with that addition. The second point is the 15,000-square-foot commercial component. We don't have an issue with the 15,000-square-foot component. Our property will be pursuing freestanding multifamily, and right now, the code states that we need to have 8,500 square foot max per building. Most commercial spaces thrive off co-location of tenancy, and if we're going to build 15,000 square feet, it's easier to attract multiple users at those locations if the building is contiguous and not separated. There's also an issue with the cost of construction and how much it's risen over the past, you know, several years especially, and the construction cost of constructing two smaller commercial buildings versus one 15,000 becomes a particular cost burden and challenging on the project. The last point I want to make is the freestanding multifamily structures. There's a proposal to reduce that from 10,000 in the current code to 8,500. I'm currently permitting just over 3,000 apartments in Thurston County, of which none of them are 8,500-square-foot footprints. Most of them are above 12,500 square feet. We're proposing to increase this to 12,500 because about 25% of the current apartments I'm working on, including 600 in Lacey, can meet the 12,500-square-foot single-foot footprints. So just wanted to highlight that. Those are kind of the the key takeaways of our letter. There's lots of good stuff to read in there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Matt Farrell was the next person that was interested. Please state your name and your address.
Matt Farrell, 3200 Willamette Drive Northeast. Hello, my name is Matt Farrell. I'm the Development Manager of the Tilden Apartments Project near the corner of Willamette and 31st. We also own the adjacent two-acre parcel we generally refer to as Tilden Commercial. This parcel is currently zoned for neighborhood commercial and would be impacted by the proposed code changes being discussed here today. Our team has been supportive of amending the neighborhood commercial zoning since we took ownership of this property in 2021. We believe that the code in its current form is not serving the needs of the city, the neighborhood, or property owners. That said, with over 25 years of experience developing commercial, retail, and multifamily properties in the Puget Sound region, we would like to offer some productive feedback on the proposed code changes. Principally, we would like to request greater flexibility be given to residential uses within this zoning designation. We've attempted to develop sites similar to this parcel in other jurisdictions, and it's our professional opinion that ground-floor commercial space will not work on this particular site anytime in the near future. To begin with, it costs roughly $600 a square foot to build retail in today's market, and the corner coffee shop cannot afford to pay the rent required to justify construction. We encourage the city to adopt flexible standards that would allow for ground-floor market-rate residential uses. This will help bring residents and shoppers into the area so that retail spaces could potentially thrive in the future. Second, we've heard from community members desiring a grocery store be located in the neighborhood commercial zones north of I-5. While we understand this goal, we have worked with grocery tenants in the past, and the economic reality is that a grocery store will not be viable at the Tilden Corner because of the lack of space for the required parking ratios. Additionally, over the past three years, we've been marketing this site with retail brokers, and we have received zero interest from commercial tenants. If the proposed code requires ground-floor retail use, we have serious concerns that this land will stay vacant for a decade or more. We don't believe that is in the city's interests. Lastly, we applaud the city's desire for more affordable housing. However, the current draft's mandate for only affordable housing on the ground floor is too limiting. For small sites like Tilden Commercial, affordable housing requirements make projects infeasible. We would encourage the city to provide flexibility for all residential uses on the ground floor and encourage affordable housing through other incentives, such as multifamily property tax exemption. Our team would love the opportunity to meet with members of the Planning Commission and the City Council to discuss development concepts that we believe can be successful at this location and that would better serve to benefit the City of Lacey. We can make ourselves available to meet with you at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet O'Halloran. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Janet O'Halloran, 9031 Merrill Court in Lacey. On May 3, 2022, a report from Lacey's Hearing Examiner, there was a recommendation that was issued that the City Council approve a conditional use permit authorizing the development of a gas station in a convenient market in the Meridian neighborhood. It was approved, and that's where many quit reading. The Hearing Examiner expressed in footnote 3 on page 21 of his findings, conclusion, and recommendation report that he had the potential to deny the gas station project. However, he wrote, "How to quantify or evaluate local citizen acceptance was best left to elected officials." I spoke individually and extensively with City Council members. I can assure you, they did not read that report in its entirety.
Ms. O'Halloran, I'm going to I'm going to pause you right there. We're looking for comments that are directly relevant to these amendments.
I have them, thank you. I have a proposed draft language. Thank you.
Okay. Then please address that. This is not the place to be criticizing past decisions.
I'm giving context to the new draft language. You are not elected officials. Your role, however, is to advise those who are. It was the sloppy writing of the municipal code that addressed local citizen acceptance under intent but then failed to tie that to substantive concerns or standards governing development. Do you notice in the packet in front of you any glaring omission? Missing is the intent language, and missing is the implementation language the Hearing Examiner suggested tethering the two. The draft before you skips directly to permitted uses, relabeled as 1636.010, and eliminates any example which previously considered public acceptance. Look at the existing language and the proposed language side by side. Look at it critically. Some snicker when discussing how quickly outdated permitted use language can become. I understand how no one can anticipate how our communities will develop in the future. That's precisely why 1636.010C intent language as it exists must remain, and more importantly, new language connected to implementation be added. The good news is, we can, we can make that change. I'm not an attorney, but I've proposed some draft language here, which because of time, I'm not going to be able to share with everyone, but I will, I have it digitally if I can submit that. For all of you, I encourage you to look at the draft language that I'm proposing. It's quite simple. I do believe that businesses are important parts of neighborhood commercial zones. I also believe that neighbors are important parts of neighborhood commercial zones. In your role, Planning Commission members, it's important. Your role and your decisions have long-lasting implications and consequences on the citizens who live in these neighborhoods. Let's sincerely shape our community together. Do you have the energy and the initiative to make difference for neighbors? Thank you for your consideration.
In the last two names, I'm not sure if you wanted to speak. They kind of put a line, so I'm going to ask Mark Freebridge. You didn't need to. Okay, and then Tom and Judy Duboski?
Ask.
Okay, sorry if I butchered your name. I apologize. So that's everybody. Do we have anybody on Zoom that wanted to say something?
What I might ask at this point is if there's anybody in the room that would want to speak that that didn't mark the list, this would be your opportunity to do that. Feel free just to go up to the podium, introduce yourself, and we can start from there.
Margaret Green, 4732 Orcus Court, Lacey. I just have, I just have one comment. Because this is a neighborhood. a neighborhood commercial zone, I feel that a 15-foot buffer is too small. I would like to see wider buffers, both at, and it's a 10-foot buffer on the side, so I just feel that neighbors need more space from commercial activity. So that's my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask a clarifying question on what you just said?
He's asking it.
So you're saying that the buffer needs to be wider than 15 or 10. Do you have an idea of what you would like to see for the use of a wider buffer?
I would like to see green space left. If there's green space that existed, I'd like to see some trees left or other landscaping options that would allow, also trails could be integrated. So just something more to soften the impact of the commercial zone.
Thank you for that very much.
Hi, my name's Rose Kim P C. My address is 7609 Rushmore Way Northeast. Oh, Rushmore Way Northeast. Can you hear me now? Okay. I was reading through this, and I know these are general guidelines, but specifically for 41st and Marvin Road, because I directly live in this neighborhood. These are all family houses, and I'm a little bit concerned about the three-story up to a maximum of 40 feet in an area where there's just single-family homes over towering and changing the entire landscape of the area that we moved in for a specific reason. And I understand the need for affordable housing very much, but I also understand that us as neighbors have an interest in the area that is adjacent to immediately where we live. And I think putting up a 40-foot or up to 55-feet-height building next to single-family homes in an area where we live because we wanted to live in a single area, single-height family home area to raise our families and be in contact with neighbors is a little bit out of place, and I'm very concerned about having such heights of buildings in these areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Green, and I live at 4732 Orcas Court Northeast in Lacey, in the community of Jubilee, senior community. And first of all, I'm going to thank you guys for all the hard work, and I know you do, you do a good job. Okay, is that okay if I compliment people? First of all, I'm going to kind of echo what my bride just said. Lacey is called a tree city, okay? And it's called a tree city for a reason. We have trees, and we would love to see buffers left, and I'm talking about tree buffers. First of all, trees are more than trees. They're habitat for birds, for wildlife. They calm our lives. They're just so beneficial in many ways, physically and mentally. And I'd like to see us leave, I mean, if you drive through those warehouses, it's like, here's the fence line of a home, and here's the pavement of the driveway for the warehouse. And I don't think that's right. I think if we're a tree city, we should leave a few trees as a buffer, and let's leave these neighborhoods as neighborhoods. And I know everybody's talking about, we got to make money, we got to make money, but you know what? We got to live here, too. So please, keep that in mind when you start making these changes. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? Yeah, go ahead.
Allison Cabral, 5635 Walden Drive in Lacey. One, I want to echo what John just said, but secondly, how the current city hall is designed, how you guys have incorporated the trees. I walk 41st and Marvin pretty regularly, and I love the trees that are there. And so with whatever consideration it is for that particular business district, if you can surround it like you've surrounded this beautiful city hall, that, to me, is well-thought integration for the environment that we live in. And part of the reason we came to Lacey was because of the trees. So I don't want to see them clear-cut or go away on a six-acre piece of property, at least in that particular area, because I live over there. So, and I realize you've got a lot on your plate with all the different districts, so I respect that. So thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else in the room? Okay. What I'll do is, at this point, we'll move to Zoom. I'm going to go over to the computer over there. So at this time, if you are on Zoom and you would like to provide comment, use the raise hand function of the webinar, and we'll go ahead and bring you in. So give me one second to move over. So we do have a number of people on Zoom. If anybody would like to provide public comment on Zoom, this is your opportunity to do that. You can use the raise hand function, and we'll go ahead and bring you in. One more time, if you'd like to be brought in for public comment, this is the time to be able to do that. Go ahead and use the raise hand function, and we can bring you in. At this point, I don't see that we have any public comment on Zoom.
Okay, with that, I want to thank each of you that took your time to testify. For anybody else that's tuned in, I want to thank you for taking the time to write your comments into us. I would like to encourage anybody that didn't feel comfortable getting up and speaking, or when you were speaking and you sat down and you went, oh, man, I meant to say that, please submit your comments to us, because we would like to make our decisions with as much information from you as possible. With that, I'm going to close.
Jeff, I would recommend leaving the public hearing open, actually, for another week. So what I would recommend is that that would allow people to submit a written comment into the record. So my recommendation is that you leave the record open, the public hearing open, until Wednesday, March 20, at 5:00 PM, for the public to be able to submit in writing any additional comments. Those comments that we would receive will then be put into the Planning Commission's packet, and they will be able to review those at the March 27 meeting. It's absolutely at the Planning Commission's option, so you don't need to do that. That would be the staff's recommendation, though, at this point. So if you're okay with that, you can let us know, and we can move forward accordingly.
So I would then recommend to my fellow commission members that we take Ryan's suggestion and leave the public comment period open until March 20 at 5:00 PM. If you agree with that, please give me a thumbs up. Awesome. I think that's a good plan, and so that is what we will do. And for now, we will exit the visual portion of the public hearing and go back to the regular Planning Commission meeting. And having exhausted what we needed to do tonight, I'm going to call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.